Welcome to the January 6th, Phoenix City Council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, here.
Vice Mayor Guardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. Now that we've called to order, will Mario Barajas please introduce himself?
Today's in... Good afternoon, thank you Mayor, this is Mario Barajas. I'm going to be serving as the interpreter and I will be introducing myself now to the Spanish speakers. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mario Barajas. Voy a estar sirviendo como el intérprete de español de esta tarde. Muchas gracias, thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Vice... Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordnances number G6782 through 6791, S47207 through 47237, and resolutions 21888 through 21889.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on boards and commission nominations?
Yes, Mayor, I motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor license applications?
Motion to approve items 2 through 11, except item 2.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Passes unanimously. Item number 2 is in District 1, represented by Councilwoman Williams, so I will turn to her for a motion.
Since staff has recommended approval, I would like the motion to approve this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. A representative for the applicant is online, so we will turn to David Dow.
It's appropriate because there has been a pre-existing liquor license on this property 60 days before this application. There are no protests as far as I know. The applicant is qualified, capable, and reliable. Mr. Hourslund has been a lifelong resident of Phoenix, attended Brophy, NAU Finance, worked for the federal government with the FDIC. He owns a large number of properties within Phoenix. His partner, Ms. Bernard Gard, also owns a large number of properties within Phoenix, manages them. They're both a little older than what probably is normal in this business, but they have been successful in life and they really don't have any problems, the police and the staff and everybody else approved them.
Thank you, Mr. Dow, and any comments about previous violations?
The only violation that were alleged there was when Mr. Hourslund associated with the candy store, but that was after... The violations occurred before he purchased his interest in 2010. All of those violations were predated his purchase. Since he has been there with the candy store, there have been no violations alleged. There are pre-existing ones with other owners and operators.
Wonderful, thank you. Any additional questions? Any council member comment? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
No.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 7-2.
City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning, and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items 12 through 67, except the following: Items 20, 29, 37, 47, 50, 64, and 65. Item 27 has been withdrawn. Item 36 is as corrected, and excluding these items for public comment, 14, 30, 41, and 51.
Second.
Any corrections? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. I apologize. Pastor?
Yes.
Thank you. Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
We next move... So we did not have anyone... Wait, 14 was part of consent, is that right?
Mayor, it has been pulled out as part of the... Out of the omnibus. So that is the...
Okay, so then we next go to 14? Yes, okay. Do we have a motion on item 14?
Motion to approve item 14.
Second.
Any comments? And for our staff, this is one where we have had someone... We did have public comment and then we did not, so at the moment, there is no one ready to comment.
That is correct, Mayor.
All right. Roll call on item 14.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Excellent. We next go to item number 20, which is selection of the vice mayor. Yes, uh... Oh, let's see. Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Belda Williams. She has been a three-time interim mayor, and I know she's been vice mayor a couple of times, but she's termed out, and I think this would be a distinct honor for her as she terms out. Thank you.
I will second.
Thank you. Very excited to move forward, but first wanted to recognize our Vice Mayor Guardado for service during such an unprecedented time. Thank you for your impeccable service during this past year and your passion for our city and your district, from being a strong supporter of our local businesses to the people who power our economy and champion for District 5. So if it's okay with my colleagues, I'd like to turn to the Vice Mayor for comments.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that, Mayor. So yes, I just want to thank everyone for the leap of faith that everyone took with me a little bit over... A little bit over a year ago. I had been in office only for a couple of months. It was a very great experience as a new council member. I think it was great to be able to have this opportunity to serve as vice mayor. I think it gave me the opportunity to really learn how the agendas go, being able to build relationships with different people, being more involved this past year. Was nothing what we all thought was going to be, right? COVID, you know, put us... Put a little bit of a spin on a lot of the things that we wanted to get done this year. But yes, it was... It's been a great honor to serve as a vice mayor. I am very excited now for, you know, for what's to come, but I do appreciate... Appreciate the support and everyone that just believed in me to be able to do this. And God knows that it gave me the opportunity to be able to accelerate my learning and learn a lot of new things, and it's been great, and I want to thank you all for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Councilman DeCecio.
I just want to give Councilwoman... Or Vice Mayor Guardado, at least right at this moment, a huge compliment as well. I mean, she did an amazing job, especially coming in as a freshman. You know, learning this is not that easy, but she was able to do it literally within one meeting. And the fact of the matter, she was always open, even though we didn't agree on things, as we all know. But she was a perfect example of bipartisanship, because on a lot of things we did agree on, we worked together on. Even those things we didn't agree on, we worked together on to try to find a way to make things work. And so I want to give her a huge accolade for the way she handled herself, the way she was able to be agreeable to those, even though there were times we didn't agree, and handled it in such an incredible way. So congratulations to you, Vice Mayor Guardado, for handling things as a freshman and handling it incredibly well as anybody else I've ever seen. And I've been around for a little while, and you've handled it amazingly well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman DeCecio.
Mayor.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Well, Mayor, I first want to thank the Vice Mayor for her leadership. And being a role model for a lot of Latinas that are out there for her first year on the council to become vice mayor, I think that's historic, especially from the Maryville area. I know that a lot of young people look up to her. She goes into the community, she helps out a lot. It's hands-on, so I think that her presence within the community, even with COVID, you know, making sure that the... They got... That in her district, she got her fair share of exams and making sure that people were taken care of. So thank you, Vice Mayor, for your leadership. Thank you for everything you've done for young people, especially Latinas in our city. And regarding the vote on the vice mayor... Mayor, I've been on the council for the last 13 years, and it's sort of like a symbolic thing for council members to become a vice mayor. Other years that I've been on the council, we've always had this senior person that was next in line just kind of continue being vice mayor. So it's kind of awkward that we're going to have Belda for like the third or fourth time as vice mayor. I really was hoping that we would look at maybe Sal or Deborah or Carlos to have that experience, just like what the vice mayor was saying. I would help her out a lot to understand the policies and how agendas and stuff are created. So no offense to my great friend and my colleague that we were appointed at the same time, but I'm going to be voting no, because I believe it's a... It should be a tradition, it should continue where we have people that haven't been vice mayors. I've served. I believe Jim Waring has served. Deb... Laura has served. I believe that Jim... Jim Waring? Did I say Jim? And I think everybody else except for... And Laura, except for those three individuals I mentioned. So hopefully, we would create a tradition where we would have... Everyone have that opportunity of being the vice mayor. So no offense, Belda will be voting no, because I think we should continue with that tradition. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Williams.
I too want to applaud Vice Mayor. She has done an outstanding job, considering she was so new and just thrown in the mix. And I know she has done well for the city as well as for her district, so thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you. And also thank you for your words, Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stark.
I too want to thank the Vice Mayor. She's done a great job. She has been my ally and gated ally, so I consider her a great friend. And you did an excellent job, and I'm happy that we'll still be working together. Thank you.
Yes, we will continue with the gated ally program. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Really appreciate working with Vice Mayor. I don't... I feel like she doesn't necessarily need the title of vice mayor to collaborate with anybody, and so really appreciate that and all the collaboration that has been done. She has led us during a time, an unprecedented time during COVID, and was able to help us deliver and give services out to our community during a stressful time. So I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Laura.
Mayor. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Guardado, thank you so much for your service. I think your voice is a moral compass on this council. I've appreciated, you know, coming in with you together. We've grown together. Your voice for working families, for the workers of the city is heard. Unfortunately, you know, the thing you worked on the most is hospitality ordinance. We weren't able to come through and help you with that, but I committed to you, Vice Mayor, not to continue to support your efforts in supporting the workers of the city. So thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Yeah, we will continue working on stuff.
Mayor, can I say something?
Councilman Waring.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, I just thought did just a really professional job the whole year, always there. Speaks slowly, so an old codger like me can actually hear what's going on, which I appreciate. Hearing isn't the best. And just really appreciate... Decorum isn't exactly the right word, but just professionalism was one word that I would use. Always, you know... Always speaking clearly, always making the motions clearly, just doing a good job, you know, helping run the meetings. I know that's probably invaluable to the mayor, so I just wanted to say thanks for that. You know, really, I couldn't even think of one glitch in a year of service, and that's really saying something, because there's a lot of votes and a lot of motions you got to make. So thank you for that, Betty, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. We will now move to roll call. Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
No.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Mayor, can I explain my vote?
Yes.
So I'm going to be voting yes. I've had the pleasure to work very closely with Councilwoman Williams and stuff that has to do with the airport. I've really appreciated the partnership that we've been able to build there. I think it was really... I think it was really great and different things that we've been able to work on. But I do agree with Councilmember Nowakowski with the idea that I think we should have a more... You know, a different way on how we, you know, decide who should be the next vice mayor. I think we should have more collaboration. I think different people should definitely have the opportunity to do this. I don't want to repeat myself, but I mean, it is a huge learning experience, and I think it's really great. So I mean, hopefully... Hopefully, you know, we're going to have to do this again in a couple of months, and maybe we can have a deeper conversation on who should be the next vice mayor and, you know, and that we can come to an agreement on who that person can be. So I'm going to be voting yes.
Gallego.
Thank you. This vote comes while we have unprecedented and un-American events in our nation's capital, and it is a hopeful sign that city council is voting in a bipartisan manner right now. I hope that as our country moves forward and rebuilds, that we can be part of the institution that helps us support free and fair elections and work together on a nonpartisan basis. I vote aye.
I'm...
Mayor, could I just make a comment?
I vote aye, or yes?
Thank you, thank you.
Council... And congratulations, Councilwoman Williams, on your election as vice mayor. I turn to you for comments.
Thank you very much. I deem this as a real honor, and it's definitely a surprise, but I want to thank all of you for your support and our continued cooperation in working with one another. I think that's what makes Dean successful. Mrs. Council has great ideas, but they don't happen unless we work together. So thank you very much for the honor and the support. Thank you.
Thank you. And as is our tradition, our outgoing Vice Mayor Guardado will continue to serve as vice mayor throughout this council meeting. So we continue to ask her to help lead our council meetings. And with that, I will ask her if she could help us on motion... With a motion on item 29, people's soft application development.
That would be great. Motion to approve item 29.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams. Williams. I apologize. Councilwoman Williams. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 6-2.
Thank you. We next move to item 30, amendments to the pay ordinance, one that I think the Vice Mayor will particularly enjoy making. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, I really enjoy this. Yes, motion to approve item 30.
Second.
We do have three individuals to testify who've been involved with this particular agenda item. We'll begin with Mario Ayala, followed by James McKenna. Mario.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm mayor and city council. My name is Mario Ayala. I'm the proud president of AFME Local 2384. We represent 96 skilled trade classifications within the city of Phoenix, including the Utility Technician Work Group. The Utility Technician Work Group is another vital classification in providing clean and safe drinking water and the removal of wastewater to the residents of Phoenix while maintaining the aging infrastructure. The union has been ringing the alarm on this issue with the Water Department for more than eight years and are pleased that the city manager finally intervened. The 24/7 work these men and women provide go unnoticed. Their skillset, education, and experience are essential critical parts of public safety. No one ever questions where their water comes from, or how, when they flush the toilet, where does the waste go, or how firefighters put out fires. These employees have dedicated their careers to being so dependable that no one ever thinks twice about these services. During the summer, winter, and even during a national pandemic, the dedication of these employees is truly unwavering. The findings of this study and the recommendation by the city's class and comp team reflect the costly disadvantage of high overturning... Overturning facing of the department and the compensation lag in comparison with our competitors. By implementing this recommendation, the city of Phoenix takes a step forward in addressing the ongoing retention and recruitment issue. At one point this past year, the Utility Technician Classification held over 50 vacancies out of 133 positions and struggled to find qualified candidates. We believe that this adjustment will allow the city and the department to continue its great service to the community while retaining and attracting new talent. We ask that the city council not only accept this recommendation to approve the grade increase of the Utility Technician Work Group, but also ask that the city of Phoenix start making efforts for a citywide compensation analysis. As we have seen with the electrical family and now the Utility Technician family, a trend in lagging in compensation of our skilled trades. We believe that the citywide compensation study should be formulated and implemented to ensure that the city is competitive with our surrounding municipalities and the prospective industries. We thank you for your time and consideration.
Mayor.
Thank you. We have two additional public comments. Would you, Councilmember Garcia, like to hear those first, or would you like to comment now?
I had a quick question for Ed, but I could wait till the end.
Perfect. We will then go to Mr. McKenna, followed by Ralph Lopez, Sr.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for your time. As a city of Phoenix employee and a skilled laborer, I cannot stress enough that it is time that our skilled laborers receive the compensation and study that they have so, so long waited for. It's been about 10 years since there's been a class and comp study and has been implemented. And as everyone can see, in this struggling time, we're having difficulties filling vacancies and maintaining employee retention. This class and comp study will provide our employees with the compensation they deserve, build a stronger city, build a stronger workforce, and improve our own infrastructure. I thank you for your consideration and your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez is our final comment.
Hello? All right, can you guys hear me?
We have a little echo, but we can hear you.
All right, sorry about that. I just would like to say thank you for having me speak to the city council. Just want to... Just want to mirror what my colleague said. It's been a while since the class and comp has been from the city of Phoenix, but we... I do appreciate you guys' consideration. Coming straight from the field, this really affects a lot of the workers. You have a lot of solid workers that work out the field, that devote their time and put their life on the line, day in and day out. And I encourage anybody that be interested to go out and maybe take a day with these individuals and see the hard work that they put into the city to keep the city safe. Like I said, I don't have a structured thing to say, but I just... This is real dear and near to my heart, just because, like I said, I come from the field and these guys are out there during the pandemic, and we're losing solid individuals, men and women, to other cities just because of the compensation. And if I can open my billfold and give them the money to keep them here, just because I know how the asset they are, they are to the city, you know? And if it's about the money, you know, I wish I could help everybody out, but I can't. And just like Mario had mentioned earlier, doing a citywide class and comp would really solidify keeping these members here and keeping these people here in the city of Phoenix, which I was born and raised. It just giving back and putting these people, you know, providing for their family, just doing it day in and day out like you individuals do as well. So like I said, I appreciate you guys' consideration, your time, but the city of Phoenix is being held up by some good individuals, hard-working individuals that devote their whole life. My dad worked 37 years for the city of Phoenix and...
Thank you. Thank you for your service and your families. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Ed, I had some questions, both on how these studies happened, and then we heard the ask of being able to do a citywide. So is there a strategy for us to be able... Um, so is there a strategy for us to be able to, to make sure that we're competitive a, across the board, not just in one department?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Garcia, just a, a little history on it. So, about 10 or 12 years ago, in the Great Recession, we cut many positions in the city, including a large number of folks in our central HR department who, who did many of these studies. And so, we didn't have the personnel to do the studies, as well as, for about a seven to 10-year period, we were actually in concession bargaining, restoration concession, and then restoration. So, it was only two years ago that we got to a point where we were back, uh, in compensation where we were be, before the 2008 recession. So, in that time period, it didn't make a lot of sense to, uh, one, we didn't have the staff, but two, to be, uh, examining this at the same time as we were taking concessions from employees and then restoring them. Now that we're back in this, uh, time beyond that, uh, period, we have a couple more staff, although not a lot, and they really do a great job in that group. And, uh, we, uh, started negotiating with some of our labor groups for individual studies that they deemed the highest priority to their labor group. And some of these, uh, fall in the category, uh, of that. To your, so to your other question, though, yes, Lori Baze, the HR Director, is doing, uh, has begun a, a citywide compensation study that will lay out a strategy for us so that the council can make a, a determination on a broader view, uh, of the entire organization. So, that is coming. That is, I believe Ms. Baze has been around and talked to the council at this point about that. And I would just also would like to say that I'm, I'm very pleased that the results of this one, because as, as our labor, uh, folks said on the call, our utility technician class is some of the, has some of the most difficult work in the city. Uh, they work in extreme heat and the extreme cold in the middle of traffic. Uh, as Mr. Ayala said, it, for a, a service that people often take for granted. But I know that the council does not take for granted the utility technician class, nor does, uh, city management. We really appreciate them and are pleased at the result of the study.
Mayor, if I may, Councilwoman Stark. I gotta tell you how much I really do appreciate him. So, yesterday, um, my neighborhood woke up. The street was flooded, the water was gushing to our retention, uh, basin, which was flooded because a pipe had burst. Um, one of my neighbors immediately called Water Services and it, we, in, I don't know, it seemed like in minutes, they arrived and start working, um, on the pipeline. We had to shut the water off for maybe, oh, gosh, three or four hours. So, Mario's right. We sometimes take these things for granted, but when you don't have water for a while, it really is quite the experience. The people working out there were professional. They, they were dedicated to get, solving the problem. It was such a mess on our street and they stayed and they cleaned up our street. And I really want to say thank you to the Water Services, uh, Department. You are a hero in my neighborhood. And to me.
Thank you. Well said. Councilman Noakowski, followed by Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so Mayor, back 13 years ago, I think it was just me and Del that we were on the cusp of that time. Well, we had to make some hard decisions. I mean, we went down through an economic downturn and we turned to our employees to help. A lot of them took furlough days, a lot of them took cuts, a lot of them actually wore two to three different hats. And we were able to survive that economic downturn. And we committed to those in the, individuals that, once we get back to where we were back in 2007, that we would make up all those losses. And it's leaders like Mario that came and kept on saying, we need to have a study, we need to have this study. We need to make, to make sure that we don't lose these great employees that have been with us for years. And generation to generation, it's incredible. I represent South Phoenix and the Southwest area of, of, um, Levine and also Maryville. And you have families that grandparents to fathers, to sons, have been working for the city of Phoenix and they're very proud employees of the city of Phoenix. And this study really gives back a fair share of their salaries, making sure that they get paid as other cities are paying their employees, as other people are getting paid to be, um, electricians and, and crises like the water pipes that were breaking down, that they get their fair share. And that's what it's all about. And I just really want to thank the leadership of making this happen. And this is the first step for all the different departments. All those people that work in the parks, that work in the libraries, that work in all the different departments in the city of Phoenix, that we need to make sure that you all get your fair share. And just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart and from all the, uh, people in District 7 and throughout the city, that those sacrifices that you all made 10 years ago, 13 years ago, that, that's what makes us a great city. That's what makes us, that all those amenities are still open. And, and that's what makes us Phoenix. So, thank you once again for doing all that. And Mario and all the leaders in that union, thank you for pushing this. And I believe that other people are going to benefit from this. Uh, so thank you very much.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also wanted to take a minute, um, to, um, to thank Ed. Um, you know, thank you, Ed, for, for taking this, um, serious and doing this study. I think we've been talking for the last year about what is it that we can do to, to retain workers, right, to retain our workforce and to continue to have people be proud of working, um, for the city of Phoenix. Um, I also want to thank Mario and Local 20, 2384 or ASME Local again, right? I'm a huge believer. It's like, you know, when you have a union, like, your job is so much better. So, thank you so much, Mario, as well for, you know, for, for pushing for this, for these workers. Um, I think it's incredibly important that we continue to pay workers good wages, um, that we continue to figure out a way, how do we, how do we continue, um, to support workers during, during this pandemic? And, and with, with the work that workers do every, every single day. I mean, these are the workers that build the city, that make our city thrive, that make, um, make sure that once tourism gets back into Phoenix, they're the ones that are going to make everyone feel welcome. So, I just want to thank everyone for taking this really serious and, you know, and, and this is just one step. And I know that we're going to continue to figure out what are other places where we might need to do some increases in, in wages so that we can retain workers. I think that's incredibly important. So, just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman DeCecio.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And I'll echo a lot of the things that the other staff, uh, and other staff, the other council members have just said. We have a really good workforce. They've done an amazing job for the city of Phoenix. And we developed a really good relationship even with the labor group. Sometimes we're at odds, but not always. I mean, we find ourselves more in a compatible, uh, way than we do, you know, contrary to that. And when Councilman Noakowski was talking about what we used to do back, you know, 10 years ago, 12 years ago, we did the same type of studies that were then. And back then, it was not as competitive of a workforce that was out there. Today, I think our markets, uh, the growth that we have in our city, we will end up seeing a disparity in here that we did not see back in, you know, 10 years ago. Because we didn't have that level of growth. A lot of the things we saw were basically bubble oriented. But that's not today. Today is a real growth model that we're seeing and very little bubble, if there, if it even exists. Which means that workers' compensations need to be higher in order to compete and to be able to bring in the right amount of individuals. And that includes not just water, sewer, and other places, and public works, but you gotta look at the planning department and other places like that, too. We've got to be able to be competitive out there. So, I'm always supportive of that. But I want to make sure, and I know this is what we did back then, and the reason it didn't come in, uh, to the point where I think it's going to be today, is that, you know, back then, when we looked at, you know, the, all the benefits and, you know, government employees are generally paid in the backend through a retirement, uh, program, you know, through, um, a pension. The private sector doesn't have that. But once we considered all those things, where there was always that evening out, right, where people in the private sector could retire soon, they were just getting social security. You know, people that worked in government, whether teachers or city workers or state, they were able to be taken care of. That's why they settled for lower wages. But today's market, I really believe that the total compensation is going to be higher. Um, and I do think that we should be doing these kind of studies, not just with, you know, government to government, because you're not competing for all those people. You're competing in the private sector right now. And for us to be able to get enough people and, you know, skilled individuals in particular, from electricians to plumbers, to those types of things, we're not going to even be close to being in that market right now. And I think that as we look at these different groups, we really ought to be taking a more comprehensive look. So, you know, I'm all favorable toward that. But I think it needs to be very larger, and I think we're going to see a, a larger disparity than we've ever seen before just because of the growth and the competitiveness in the markets we see today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Ed, thanks, thanks for answering that earlier. I think it'd be good to, to see a timeline. I think, um, something that, I, I forgot who said it from, from the folks that spoke, that during the pandemic, if we learned anything, was to appreciate the workers and, and, and the little things that maybe in other times we didn't notice, but now we're noticing. And so, I think there's, there's a correlation here with contracting. And, and so, I, I prefer for us to have that conversation full on, because I think a lot of the competitors that we would evaluate are folks that we are also, um, at some point or another contracting. And so, I'd prefer to figure out ways to have these studies, make sure that it's our employees that we're, we're assured that they're protected by, by their labor, by their labor associations, that we're assured that they're going to have pensions and they have good wages. And so, um, I'm happy that we're going to make, uh, the, the citywide study, or we're going to continue to do this study. I just, you know, speaking to, to both the, the labor associations and my colleagues, I really hope that we can continue to strengthen, um, our internal, uh, employees and make sure that we're, we're doing that both by doing these studies and, and making sure that they're getting the wages they deserve, but also minimizing the contracting that, that we may be taking on. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yeah.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. I apologize. Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes.
Thank you. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next move to item 37, continuing the important, good news. Contract with Community Legal Services for eviction assistance during the COVID-19 pandemic. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 37.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a sec, a second. This is a, an important item that, uh, allows more than $400,000 to be directed to community legal services, empowering them to provide a additional layer of protection and resources for those in our community facing eviction. There has been so much confusion about what protections are available. And, um, frankly, the, the, the protections and the deadlines change often. So, I am very excited about this item and, and the education as well that it, that is part of this. Um, I think we are all very worried about people who may lose their housing and, and hopefully this is a, a small step forward in a very difficult situation. Uh, we do have, uh, one member of the public to address the council on this item, so we will turn to Mr. Gray.
Mayor, it appears that Mr. Herrera is not on the line.
Answer. Okay. Councilmember comments. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Mayor, just a quick comment on that. Um, as I have in the past, I just believe it's a lot better for us to pay these individuals directly to where it would go to their payments rather than hiring third parties. I don't see the benefit of that at all, but that's just my end of it. I'd rather do direct payments to individuals to take care of it. That's what those COVID dollars are for. So, I'm going to be voting no. Thank you, Mayor.
Garcia.
Mayor, may I explain my vote?
Please do.
Thank you. I, I think we should, with, with the comments from, from Councilman DeCecio, I think we should be doing both. I think the justice system is very confusing, particularly for people with low income, people of color. And so, I think we should be doing both. We should be looking to be able to give folks the direct assistance so that they could pay their mortgage, um, or their rent. And we've done that. I'm really proud of the council that we've done that. I also think it's important to help people navigate this, this, uh, system. And, and so, I'm really happy that we're going to do this, and I hope we can continue to find ways. We understand how people without shelter, the homeless situation, it continues to grow in Phoenix. This is one of the ways where we can actually be preventive, um, as we try to figure out how to get people, um, without shelter support as well. So, I would be a yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight one.
We next move to item 41, strategies to address homelessness. We will be looking for a, hiring a task force facilitator. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 41.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Walt Gray is online on this item, so we'll turn for public comment.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to say that, uh, I think, uh, the public is entitled to more information. Let me turn on the TV. I'm sorry. Uh, more information on, um, on, um, Mr. McGinnis a, as to why he, there's no other, uh, consideration for other people as facilit, facilitators. And I also, uh, think that the $10,500 is too low for somebody who has to, uh, attend these long task force meetings. It should, the meetings should be long. This is, um, a huge problem. And, uh, plus there's preparation, plus follow-up. Uh, I, I don't understand this. Plus, all the, the talent that must be here in order to deal with this and connect with this on a regional basis. Uh, I, I, I ask you to, to, uh, you know, elaborate to the public why, uh, Mr. Genna was selected without, uh, competition.
Thank you. That is our final public comment. Councilmembers.
So, Mayor.
Roll, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. Yeah, I think, um, this is going to be really great. Um, when we, you know, when we took this out to constituents, I think this was a critical piece that our, that our constituents, um, were looking for, um, as we are looking for innovative ways on how we approach homelessness. I think that, you know, this, this facilitator is, and this task force is really going to help us figure out different ways and comprehensive ways. And how do, how do we approach this and how do we, um, make sure that a lot of people can get involved? Homelessness is an issue that is not going to be dealt with, um, just by us coming up with ideas. I think we're going to have to continue to rely on our constituents, on the community, um, to help continue to put a lot of these plans together. So, I'm, I'm very excited and pleased that we were able, um, to come to this and that we find different ways on how do we help folks that are experiencing homelessness and how do, how do we deal with this in the most professional way possible? And in a way that actually alleviates people and that we're able to put an end to this, to this problem that, because we have a lot of people that are hurting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And, um, will we, let's go to our city manager, Ed Zirker, to speak a little bit to this item.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Just to address the question that was asked. Mister, we have experience with Mr. Jenna. He actually has been extremely helpful to us in, uh, training, uh, staff and our labor, um, groups in interest-based, uh, negotiations. So, he actually is highly recommended to us from experience we had with him and that our labor groups have had with Mr. Jenna in his training. So, uh, he, he, uh, has skills to, as the Vice Mayor talked about, help bring a group of people together to do a very important and difficult task. And we're very confident in his ability, um, to do this for us.
Mayor. Mayor? Thank you. And I should say that the council, several council committees are looking at different areas related to homelessness, especially our land use and livability committee. So work continues at many levels. Councilwoman Pastor?
I wanted to thank the city manager for answering the question because a constituent or a member of the public did ask a direct question. My question to the city manager is what background does he have with facilitating homelessness with the group of the committee, because it's so intricate and complex?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Pastor, I don't believe Mr. Jenna actually has experience in facilitating homeless groups. I'm not sure where we would find that. What we do know Mr. Jenna has is a real skill at helping people identify, people from diverse backgrounds and sometimes opposite points of view at the beginning, have ways to talk with each other to come up with what's called interest-based dialogue so that you can bridge the ideological gaps that people have through techniques of how to talk together in a productive way. And that's really what we're looking for here. I think we have good expertise in terms of the homelessness subject matter, both from the participants on the task force as well as our staff. But Mr. Jenna brings skills in communication and facilitating people to come to agreement on difficult problems and issues. And he's demonstrated that with us in helping train us and our labor partners.
Okay, so this is facilitation. He's the facilitator?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastor, please continue.
I have a legal question, so I don't know if Chris is there.
The city attorney is here, yes.
Can I ask the question? Because I just want to make sure I'm okay. Not realizing the facilitator is completely... Chris, I work at Phoenix College. So Mr. Jenna is one of my colleagues. So I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, it's up to you to declare a conflict when you feel it's appropriate for a perception there may be a conflict. If there's not any direct financial interest, it does not, or benefit to you. It does not involve a formal legal conflict. But you certainly can declare a conflict based on a perception if that's your choice.
Okay, I'm declaring.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll, noting that Councilwoman Pastor will not participate in this vote?
Yes, Mayor. DeCiccio?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven one.
Thank you. We next move to item 47, Phoenix City Code Amendment related to the Household Hazardous Waste Program. Will the clerk please read the title?
Item 47 is for ordinance G6782, an ordinance relating to household hazardous waste, amending Phoenix City Code Chapter 27, Solid Waste, Sections 27-5, 27-9, and 27-14.
Thank you. I really appreciate, we focused on this at the last council meeting as well, but wonderful work by our Public Works Department, trying to be innovative. Over the last three fiscal years, our household hazardous waste collection events have resulted in the proper disposal of 300 tons of hazardous waste annually. And it's crucial that we continue to provide that service. But we are adapting, and the at-home pilot is another example of how we're innovating and being flexible in the face of the pandemic. So I am looking forward to the results of this pilot and supporting this item. Vice Mayor, do we have? Sure. We'll go to Councilman Waring first, and then we will go to the vice mayor for a motion.
I apologize after saying nice things about the vice mayor. I stepped on her motion, and I apologize for that. Probably the only glitch the whole time she's been vice mayor. I did want to say, this is an excellent potential program. I've used the current program in the past myself. It is one the constituents ask about. And I should say, it is in very capable hands with Ginger Spencer and her team. They're always hyper-responsive and so forth. A few years ago, we did the Green Waste Program. I think that's been a success. It started in kind of a similar fashion. I was on the subcommittee that worked on it at the time. So I applaud the subcommittee members who sent this forward, her for her work. And I think this has a potential for a great success and that people will really use, I believe. So thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve item 47.
Second.
Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next move to item 50, notice of intention to consider an increase in the water rates and set a public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 50.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a public comment on this item, so we will go to Mr. Walt Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. My feeling on this is that, you know, it's probably inevitable that we're going to have a water rate increase. I know the last water rate increase, I was forced to stop watering my backyard. But, you know, as Councilman DeCiccio says, the city is growing, and there's other considerations, climate change and the age of the facilities. I just hope the council makes sure that the staff and the consultants hold truly public hearings and just give us the facts and not sales pitch. And, you know, we'll come up with what's justified and reasonable. And I think we've seen too many sales pitches with the trash collection, with the arena, with the Dodgers, with the Brewers. And we just need just the facts and honest opinion and give us a true chance to give you honest feedback, because I think that will result in a better decision. You know, so I just want to say that at this point, I'm glad that you're doing public hearings in these next two months. I think that's great on such an important issue, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember comments.
Mayor?
Roll call.
Just a question more.
Councilman DeCiccio. Go ahead.
Just a quick question, staff. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mayor. We're using less water today than we were close to 20 years ago. Is that correct? Or give me the date.
Councilman, one moment. We have the staff coming to the table. We have Deputy City Manager Peters and our interim water director, Eric Froberg, and our finance director, CFO Denise Olson, is here. So Karen, the question was about water use now compared to years ago.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Councilman DeCiccio. While I don't have numbers, over the past several years, many years, our water use has stayed flat while our population has increased significantly. So while I wouldn't say that we're using less water overall, our individual customers are using less. It's a testament to their commitment to conservation.
We're using less water per person than we were, let's say, 10, 15, or 20 years ago, correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCiccio?
All right, just a quick comment then, too, Mayor. Explaining my vote on this, you know, the public has done an exemplary job on this. They've done everything they've been requested to do. They've been asked to conserve. They did that. They've been told that water is precious. They've done everything that they can to do that. And every time, the city of Phoenix constantly raises rates on them. It's getting to the point where people can no longer afford to live in the city of Phoenix. We're going to end up being no different than some of these large cities that end up taxing and creating these huge fees on their public. And it impacts the people that are the poorest the worst. So sooner or later, this is all going to come back to where people can no longer live in the city of Phoenix. We've seen a huge escalation in water rate increases at the same time a decrease in the usage from the individuals that are out there because they've done their part. We need to do our part, too, and find ways to not increase rates. This is, it's crazy what's going on. This water rate increase and the ones that we're going to be seeing in the future, this is not going to end, and it's not going to end well for the city of Phoenix. It's not going to end well for the public. It's just going to be a bad situation going forward. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be voting no.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
I apologize, Noakowski?
I said yes.
Okay. Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven two.
We next move to item 51, Water Resources Development Planning Consulting Services. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 51.
Second.
We will go to the public for Mr. Walt Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my comments are basically already expressed, but I just wanted to add that in these public meetings that are coming up, I hope that the breakdown is provided as to what the house, a normal household provides and what commercial industrial users, what their, what their rates are and how their rates compare on a gallon basis or however it's measured compared to households. And I think that would be helpful as well as, you know, an explanation of how we got or the state of our water system. And also to make sure that we understand when the next time we're going to have a water rate increase, that maybe these are natural, that you have to have them every 10 years. I guess it's almost 10 years since we last had one, whatever it was. Or, and also that wastewater is going to come up, as the union member suggested. You know, and suggested in the agenda that, you know, wastewater is also an issue, that these could be, we could be notified of that pending...
Could you focus your comments on the qualified vendor list, which is our agenda item?
Thank you.
Thank you. Trying to be consistent about focusing on the agendized item. Councilmember comments. Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. We next move to the planning and development portion of our agenda. We will begin with the general planned amendment for our character plans. And I do want to begin by recognizing our planning and development director, Alan Stevenson, as well as Samantha Keating for these character plans. They are covering villages that care intensely about our city and are very engaged. We had impressive public input and unanimous votes. That took a lot of hard work, so Samantha and an entire team, count me as impressed. I will begin this item with Alan Stevenson to introduce a staff report. Then we will open a public hearing and take public comment, and then move for a motion. Director Stevenson?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I do want to also say thank you to Samantha Keating and Josh Bennerick. Both provide exemplary leadership along with their staff in developing these character plans. This request is an update to the general plan to add the character plans for the Encanto, Central City, Alhambra, Camelback East, and North Mountain villages. 10 other villages were already done in the past, and staff does recommend approval per the Planning Commission recommendation. So these character plans are an outgrowth of the 2015 general plan. And many of you will remember that at that time, one of the key focal points from the steering committee and the community was make the general plan a more readable document that really was high-level, big picture on items and not a 500-page, multi-volumeless report like prior general plans. And so one of the ways we did this was by having the general plan stick to the larger, bigger-picture issues, but then committing to work on these character plans with the village planning committees to pull out what's important within those village plans to them so that they could be put together in their own character plans that would live online, that they could then work on updating as they saw fit, and pulling out the important elements in the general plan that the council and the voters approved. And so it will be used to provide policy guidance for zoning and land use decisions in an area and also to promote what's important within the village. And it was all of the members who came up with what they think is important in each of these areas. And as you noted, Mayor, it was, they were approved unanimously by each of the village planning committees. With that, I conclude my presentation, and staff recommends approval per the Planning Commission recommendation, adoption of the related resolution.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank your team and all of our commissioners, as well as the public who participated in that process. I will open the public hearing. We do have one member of the public, Mr. Walter Gray. Walt, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I read the background material. It's in the agenda. And I think, you know, I have complained in the past, continue to complain, that the city does not include enough social planning. The city's not alone, of course. MAG does the same thing. Other cities do the same thing. Other cities throughout the country do the same thing. But we need to look at this in a more holistic way. This is an area with downtown and metro center, which is going to be redeveloped, where there's a lot of people in declining economic conditions. Otherwise, metro center would have never failed. And downtown succeeds because the whole infrastructure system is built for downtown. We need more balance in our city. I know that it's impossible to have a balance within every village. It's probably unreasonable, and it's probably not wise. But you certainly should have balance within a certain area of the city. Now, this is, you know, from downtown up to metro center, all the way up to Greenway. And you should have some balance within that area. And there should be, you know, I didn't even know that the mayor, I live in Maryville. I didn't know the very village plan had been adopted. And I wonder how many people know, these village planning committee members are appointed by the city council. They are not, they are, while they're qualified people probably, they're not the grassroots. We're still not getting down to the grassroots of our city to get the public to really comment. to get the public to really comment and develop these plans or to really know what the public needs and wants. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our final public comment. So we will close the public hearing and turn to our vice mayor for a motion. Or, yes, for a motion.
Yes, motion to approve item sixty-four per planning commission's approval on December third, 2020, and adopt the related resolutions.
I'll second.
Thank you. Councilmember comments?
Yes, Mayor. Deborah.
Councilwoman Stark, please.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment and thank Alan and his staff. You know, I am a planner by trade, and I know this is a lot of work. And they did a lot of work on this. It looks great. I'm just really proud of the planning and development department. They have great leadership, but they also have staff that just is bar none. So thank you for all the work you guys do.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Waring.
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me? Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waring and Councilwoman Williams. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Congratulations. We next move to item sixty-five, which is at the southeast corner of Thirty-first and Northern Avenues. We will begin with a brief staff report. The item is in the vice mayor's district, so then we will turn to her. We do have three, the applicant and two members of the public online for public comment. Director Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This request is a rezoning from CO commercial office to R-three-A multifamily zoning for a 2.82-acre parcel for a proposed multifamily residential project at the southeast corner of Thirty-first Avenue and Northern. Staff does recommend approval of this request. On the screen outlined in green is the subject site. You see the two buildings that are up closer to Northern Avenue are existing office buildings that the applicant is proposing to reuse those buildings and repurpose them for multifamily development and also add other buildings to it, as you will see. This is a map showing the surrounding zoning, where you have a little bit of commercial, but predominantly residential zoning around this area. You see here on this proposed map, the existing buildings are outlined in the blue color, and there are new proposed multifamily buildings they'll be adding if this request is approved, are towards the rear of the site where the parking is. So it's a great example of really reusing the existing building stock and having a use go in there that takes advantage of that existing investment that is there and then adding to it to help create some viable project that will help within the surrounding community. The Alhambra Village Planning Committee recommended ten to four to approve this request. The planning commission recommended seven to one to approve it per the Alhambra Village Planning Committee. There were a number of concerns from the community about it, and the vice mayor's office has worked with a number of those residents, along with the applicant, to address some of those concerns. And staff does recommend approval per the memo from the planning and development director that came out earlier today. That drops the density down from fifty to thirty-eight, limits access to Thirty-first Avenue to only emergency vehicle or public works vehicle as well. And with that, staff is happy to answer any questions and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will turn to the vice mayor for comment, and then we will go to the public hearing, beginning with Ashley Marsh, followed by Jeff Spellman, and then Blake Curtis will be our final comment. Before I open that hearing, vice mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. Can we go to them first and then I can go last, if that's okay? I know we had said otherwise, but if we can go to them first.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Open the public hearing. We will begin with Ashley Marsh on behalf of the applicant, followed by Jeff Spellman.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. Ashley Marsh, Tiffany and Bosco, 2525 East Camelback Road, for your records. I'm joined today by my clients, the developers for the property, Brian Schluter and Russell Black, and our architect, Jerry Palmer. And we'd just like to take a moment to thank the vice mayor for working with us. Her office was incredible. Andrew Wunder and Michael Angulo put a lot of legwork into making sure that the community's concerns were communicated and in turn, working with us to make sure that our project could be achieved and realized. So I just want to take a minute to really thank her and to thank the community for being active participants in our project and challenging us to come up with the best solutions and design and proposal that we could. And then also just thank Alan Stevenson and his staff, Josh Bennerick, Russell Escolar, and Nick Klemek for really working with us through the process as well. Through this process, we have made a number of modifications to the site. The first one was changing the zoning category that we requested from C-two with the density waiver now to R-three-A. Another is the density reduction that Mr. Stevenson referenced, from fifty units to thirty-eight units. We did make modifications as well to parking. We originally proposed parking to code, and now we will be stipulating at least five spaces over code. And then making modifications to our access point to make sure we were addressing concerns of the neighbors in terms of traffic and safety. Those primarily being limiting access on Northern to three points of access and then the new stipulation to restrict access along Thirty-first Avenue. And last but not least, we also took some feedback from the community to enhance our amenity package. We initially had proposed preserving a koi pond, adding a pool of barbecue and a ramada. And through feedback from the community, we're now going to be removing that koi pond, but keeping the same pool, barbecue, and ramada. So we've enhanced our amenities as well and adding the bicycle repair station. Through this process, we've really enjoyed working with the vice mayor in District Five and are looking forward to continuing to work with the office and putting together a great proposal, excuse me, a great project at this point that the vice mayor and the community will be proud of and are looking forward to being part of this community and bringing a great multifamily development, creating a wonderful housing opportunity that serves light mitigation and a new housing opportunity. So with that, I am available to answer any questions. But again, just want to thank staff, the District Five, and the community for their time, attention, and care to this wonderful, exciting project.
Thank you. We will go next to Mr. Spellman, and Mr. Curtis will be our final comment.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jeff Spellman with the Violence Impact Project Coalition. We represent the organized neighborhoods from Dunlap to Indian School and from Nineteenth Avenue to Thirty-Fifth Avenue. The VIP Coalition worked with the planning and development department and the community to develop a plan for revitalization of the Twenty-seventh Avenue corridor. We were very fortunate that this plan was rolled out at the same time that Betty Guerdado was elected as our city councilwoman. She embraced our plan, the plan we call our to-do list, as a mechanism to guide redevelopment and revitalization in our community. This project is a good project for our community. It supports the city's housing plan by providing much-needed workforce housing, and it supports the city's goals for adaptive reuse, ensuring that the growing number of vacant commercial properties do not degrade our neighborhoods. Our councilwoman is a resolute leader who represents all sides in our district. She has listened carefully, not only to the pros for this project, but she has also listened and responded to the neighbors who have raised concerns about this project. She has been the consummate negotiator that has resulted in concessions by the developer that will ensure this project accomplishes what we expect it to do while also respecting the views of all of her constituents. Thank you, Councilwoman Guerdado, for your leadership on this case, and I urge our council members to support Councilwoman Guerdado on this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like quite a successful process. Our final public comment will be Blake Curtis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Ashley, and thank you, city council. Again, Blake Curtis calling in. I work with a group here in the valley called Simon Commercial Real Estate. We are a merchant developer and redeveloper. And we actually acquired and are redeveloping the Park Northern Center, which is proximate to the subject property. It's currently 135,000 square feet of redevelopment. And I'm calling today in support of this project. First and foremost, Park Northern is a huge undertaking, and throughout this pandemic, it's shown that it's an accelerant for change. Some of the tenants that are currently on our rent roll are the U.S. Armed Services, CASA Academy, which is a school, and some other rather unconventional tenants. And my point is, we need this type of development in this community to support projects such as ours. Housing is an integral part of the community, and I am familiar with the product that both Russell and Brian Schluter have developed in the past. They take great care and pride in what they do for this community and treat each respective project as the most integral part of how they conduct their business. So I thank you all. Again, Blake Curtis, I am in support of this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is our final public comment.
Mayor.
We will close the public hearing and turn it to the vice mayor for comments and a motion.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I keep hearing, I mean, I just got a text that both Sinclair and Deborah LaPlante are online to speak as well on this, on this item. I'm not sure if it went to public comment or if they're on cue.
Could you say those names again?
It's Sinclair and his last name, I don't want to butcher it, but it's N-U-A, I think it is, and then Deborah LaPlante.
Mayor, it does appear that Sinclair is on the line. We can unmute him. And so is Deborah.
Okay, then we will go to Sinclair first.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear? Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Sinclair Noe. When the people in the neighborhood first heard about the request for rezoning back in July, there was widespread disapproval, a lot of problems we felt with this proposal. So we gathered signatures, 230 opposition signatures back in August and early September. It then went to a hearing before the Alhambra Village Committee in November, and they pushed it into another hearing on December third. Several neighbors have expressed real disappointment with this zoning process, and we would call for the city to provide some oversight of this zoning process and planning commission process. We hope that the planning commission would encourage community involvement rather than try to stifle it. After the December third meeting, we collected 200 more signatures over the holidays, more than 400 in total. And then we called on District Five Councilmember Betty Guardado. She listened to the neighbors, she got in touch with the developers, arranged virtual meetings, set her staff to work, and they arrived at a settlement with the developer. And I do not like the settlement. It does not make me happy. And I hope that the developer and their attorney do not like the settlement as well. But it's a compromise. We hear a lot about win-win situations. I think this is more of a don't lose, don't lose situation with a possibility and potential that maybe there'll be success for the developer and for the neighborhood in the future. And that is a good thing. Thanks to the leadership of Councilmember Guardado, we are willing to compromise. Early on in the process, I said, we're not opposed to good development, but we will fight bad development. We will hold the developers to their promises, but we are hopeful for the best. And on this day when civility and compromise and decency have disintegrated in our nation's capital, I commend Councilmember Guardado and her staff and consider this compromise a victory. Just one more moment, please. On behalf of my 400 strong neighbors who signed the position in opposition, I respectfully withdraw our opposition to the rezoning and offer our support for the project as outlined and amended by the District Five staff. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And I will turn to our staff for a second. Denise, do we have any additional registered speakers?
Mayor, thank you. It does appear that we have Deborah potentially. But just to clarify, we did not have these two persons registered through our register to speak, but they are on the webex and we're able to see them.
Okay. I think, again, I'm trying to be consistent with this process, so we would ask people to register. So I am going to go ahead and move for, if we can move towards a motion.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I mean, hopefully, we can consider that we just do have folks that are still learning how to maneuver this process. But, yeah, we can, we can move on. So before, so before I jump into comments and before I make a motion, there are a few people I would like to thank on this item. First and foremost, I would like to take a moment to thank all the neighbors who called, emailed, or sent my office and me their concerns and thoughts on this rezoning request. I want to thank the North Glen Square Neighborhood Association and their president, Mike, and director Frank. Also want to thank the Northern Heights HOA and their president, Julie. A special thank you also goes to Deborah. Deborah, I'm so sorry that you were not able to speak, even though you were on the queue to speak. Also want to thank Sinclair, who joined Mike, Frank, and Julie in conversations with our office before and after the new year. Throughout the process of this rezoning, I have continued to bring the specific concerns of my constituents to the developer. I'm doing so, I firmly believe that we have reached a much-improved project that addressed the issues of density, traffic, safety, parking, and access to Thirty-first Avenue. While the original project envisioned 50 units, we worked to reduce the density by 24%, down to 38 total units. On the issue of traffic safety, the driveway off of Northern will remain right in, right out, and left in only to provide a safer entry point. However, the developers have now moved back the entrance to allow both turnaround and more space off of Northern before the gated entry. We spoke in depth with the applicant about the importance of parking and preventing overflow into the neighborhood. Again, with the density reduction, this is going to allow them to go above the city code requirements. Access to Thirty-first Avenue will be restricted to emergency and trash vehicles only. This is important to maximize parking on site. During site planning, having the ability to open up Thirty-first Avenue to only restricted use will allow flexibility to add additional overparking on site. From the beginning of this project, I have worked hard to address the substantive issues with the project by bringing them head-on to the developer. In doing so, I feel like we have found the middle ground and negotiated a fair compromise. And I want to take this moment to thank Ashley, Brian, Russell, and Jerry. I know that you guys have scrambled, you know, a lot. I, you know, there's developers that will not work with us, and I can say that I really thank you guys for coming to the table and working with the neighbors, listening to the concerns. I think the only way we're able to reach compromise is when everyone is listening and everyone is trying to respect each other. And I think we were, we were actually able to get there. So again, I want to thank all the neighbors, neighborhood leaders and constituents who have reached out to my office after working to bring serious revision and a clear focus on neighbor concerns to this project. I am glad to see where the project has come, and I'm very supportive of this item. I also want to thank Alan. Alan, I know we've given you a lot of headaches, so thank you so much to you and to your, and to your whole team for all the work that you guys have done on this, on this as well. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the item per the January six.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
That is our final item for today's council meeting. We are adjourned.